Hi everyone, hello everyone. Today we will talk about a specific case. So, Mr. D J Prakash and his 40 years old experience. They have a dying declaration, approved evidence and joint confession. Their experience is very impressive to us. So, it is an interesting class. So, let's watch the video.
Good evening friends. First of all, I want to thank all of you for the circumstances created to me. To discuss about some of the terms which is very essential for your work. It will change examination as well as the profession. First, we will take the topic of dying declaration. That is, dying declaration is a foreign concept. In Indian law, that is the origin. Foreign law states that it is only from the English laws. The concept of dying declaration is that. If someone is a common person. How can we discuss our personal life? Then we cannot say anything. That is the concept of the name. But there are also people who live in the same country. But if we don't know the concept of it. There are many people. That is, a very big church. We are not talking about the church. But the people who are going to die. There are 50 people who are praying. That is, dying declaration is uncorroborated testimony. We can also take the dying declaration. But what is it? The dying declaration is something. That is, material facts mentioned in the prosecution case. That is, the prosecution side is arguing. And the charges are against them. All of them are taken. If they are taken. The dying declaration is not a safe dying declaration. That is, whether the dying declaration is good or not. Golden opportunity cross-examine the witness. We will see it. So, it is basic texture of the judiciary. Jurisprudence. A charge against the accused. He has a fundamental golden opportunity. And he has to pass the cross-examine. But that is not possible to take the dying declaration. If we do it, we will take it. The dying declaration is said. Other things in the prosecution case. Anything else is not allowed. Cannot change. So, first of all, in the dying declaration. There is another aspect. One aspect is that. That is, there is a deposit. The deposit is an aspect. That is, the deposit is. Before the court. We are giving judgment. It is a cross-examination given to the accused. And that the statement was given on both. After giving the declaration, the deposit. After that, his death. That is the status of called as a dying deposition. But dying declaration and deposit are different. The dying declaration is. It is required by the magistrate before the court. If we go to the church. We need the magistrate. We need the police. We need the other person. We need to give it to anyone. But if we give it to the magistrate. The judge will accept it. If we give it to a doctor. Or a senior. It should be genuine. The court should be weighed on golden scale. It is very, very true. Is it true? There must be some kind of controversy. If so, we should take the dying declaration. In the same way, we should take one dying declaration. We should take 4 dying declarations. For example, when a crime happens. At that time, they will tell us. When you are taken to the hospital. Medical officer. They will tell us. That is a declaration. If they are a police officer. That is a dying declaration. After that, they will give a memo. The magistrate will give it. Now, there are 4 dying declarations. The dying declaration. What is the dying declaration? It is a very important question. For example, now in the prosecution side. A woman. She is throwing a knife. She is throwing a knife. But the defense side is saying she is throwing a knife. Another person is in an accident. Now, with different kinds of things. You have said 4 dying declarations. What is the reason for the dying declaration? Even if it was recalled by the magistrate, it should be declared. So, the material fact. That is, when a person is in a crisis. A matter of a person. For example, a woman. A problem of a man. He is sitting in a thought. He is throwing a knife. A man is walking. He sees the man and runs away. He goes to the bathroom. All of them are facts. All of these facts. The prosecution side. What is the material of the matter? The prosecution side is saying. The dying declaration is taken. Suppose after that. The defense side is saying. If the dying declaration is required. The defense side is required. So, a dying declaration. It can be taken. But multiple definitely dying declaration is required. But the dying declaration. The material facts. Any defense. Prosecution. Any person who takes it. The dying declaration is required. The dying declaration. Is it a statute? That is, some cases. There are witnesses. If we take the dying declaration. If the dying declaration is true. It is a big object. That is, a small fish. A stream. There must be a clear agreement. The dying declaration. That is, a common person is saying. The dying declaration is required. In a court. That is, a woman is killed. But if the same thing is. The woman is alive. Why she threw the knife at the morning? 100% of the jury. If they take the dying declaration. The defense side says. At that time, they are talking about rape. But in the court. The Supreme Court. This is not a dying declaration. Because what did you do? The person who did the rape. That is why, when the statement is made by a person. Has to pass up this. Or as any of the circumstances of the transaction. Which is incident. In cases in which the cause of the person's death comes into question. That is, if someone is a small fish. How happened? What is the reason? What is the purpose? If it is just a matter of a fish. But at that time. The person who threw the knife. He threw it. That is why, the dying declaration is not allowed. But the dying declaration. If we are a common person. Suppose if someone is a common person. The value of the dying declaration is not available. Your one sentence statement. For the purpose of corroboration contradiction. The value of the dying declaration is not available. First of all, if we want to make the dying declaration. Very essential point. That is, the dying declaration. First of all, we will talk about judicial magistrate. Because the judge will come. If a judicial magistrate. Wants a dying declaration. First of all, the victim. They have completely checked the mental element of the victim. Not only that. Mental element only. Able to give answer. These two things are very important. Some doctors say they are conscious. They are conscious. But if you say that. They are conscious. What is the reason? It is able to speak. So, there are two aspects. That is, they must be conscious. Able to speak. The two are effective. If not, the dying declaration is not safe. But some judgments say. Even without the certificate of a doctor. The dying declaration. Because the most important is genuine. Now, the magistrate is talking. He is a common person. He can't talk for 5 minutes. If it is a very urgent situation. The doctor's statement is required. Such a situation must be genuine. That is why, we say. In the judiciary. Such a dying declaration. Such a dying declaration. Even a piece of paper is not allowed. The other is, the dying declaration. A number of ways. If we want to make a dying declaration. First of all, we will take it. First, what is it? First, when the dying declaration is recorded. The magistrate says. Suppose, the magistrate is talking. Tell the magistrate a lawyer. Tell the victim. If so, the declaration. The lawyer. The lawyer tells the lawyer. The lawyer tells the lawyer. The lawyer tells the lawyer. It is the criminal rules of practice. So, the criminal rules of practice are there. So, when the lawyer tells the lawyer. Only that, the lawyer tells the lawyer. The proceedings are required. I said that. The judge can only say that. I will require the proceedings. The other is, when the dying declaration is said. Question and answer form. For example, if we take a judgment. Hours together. A page together. That is, 5-6 pages. A cinema. It is a genuine dying declaration. Because the dying declaration. He is a common person. He is dangerous. He cannot talk. Such a situation. Many people are saying. That is, the dying declaration is true. He is a good person. He can only go to the test. But if not. The dying declaration is not allowed. A good person is a person. Such a question. A question. He must be dangerous. That is the worst of the judgments. If so, when the situation is. The dying declaration. For example, if someone is killing. For example, a maniac. A family has a problem. If someone throws a knife. If the maniac is in the house. They are talking about him. If so, they will say something. If you say that, it will change. So, if the murderer is genuine. They will give all the information. The police will do it. If so, we need to see it. Then, we need to see the technology. That is, we will see many things. For example, if a maniac gives a woman. If he is in the house. He is with a maniac. That is, he is a murderer. He is the murderer. That is, the dying declaration. The situation is. Who gave it? Who told? Who admitted? All of this is very small. The police is trying to arrest him. We need to see the technology. What do we need to see? First of all, the doctor. A dying declaration. The church. A magistrate. The victim is also there. The victims. The people who are there. They should be thrown. The magistrate is the one who throws them. So, in such a situation. It is very genuine. The doctor is very genuine. In such a way, away from the suspicion. It can be taken account. Third is. A medical treatment. A judgment. That is, how to take it? I will ask the doctor. That is, if all of the things he said. We will take it. For example, a murder case. That is, if someone throws a knife. We will take it. The person who is on the floor. We will take it. If the person who is on the floor. Is in a tree. The doctor will check it. If the doctor checks it. The person who is on the floor. It creates suspicion. We will take the dying declaration. So, if we take the dying declaration. We can only take the dying declaration. Instead, the dying declaration. The church. Who records the dying declaration? They will know. For example, if someone does not know. If they don't know. He is a true translator. Who knows the language? With a good translator. We will do the interrogation. There are many judgments. If we look at the dying declaration. For example. Medical treatment. Medical evidence system. It will not fail in the dying declaration. Medical treatment. 90% of the burns injuries. If you look. They can't give them liquid food. Because if they give them liquid food. The patient will die. So, they will use micro-oxygen. That is, they are not aware. They give the water. They will talk. The water is not enough. So, they give the water. But if they give the water. The conscience. The conscience is not required. If a little boy is scared. They will give the water. If they do it. We cannot say that he is conscious. That is, when the police are doing things. When looking at the case sheet. What is a strangulizer? That is, they give the water. How much? If someone asks. Can they talk? Can they talk? If they ask the other person. They will know. We will know. If they are close. There are many judgments. That is, if the person is scared. It is not possible to say that the dying declaration is correct. We can only take it. This is. That is, any of the people. Analysis. If we put a sketch. We can record it. If a shooter. If we put a sketch. For example, if we put a sketch. An investigation officer. A little boy. Short distance. A shooter. But if it is like. You all know. Gunshot injury. Exit injury. Entry injury. Exit injury. That is, when the shooter is shooting. The person who is in the car. Exit injury. Entry injury. If a person is in a car. They will say that it is exit injury. If a little boy is in a car. If a shooter is shooting. If a little boy is in a car. Experts will explain it. If a shooter. The shooter is shooting. He has put a sketch. But if the expert. The shooter is a doctor. They say that. 15-16 years ago. So, if the death is fatal. The dying declaration. It will not fail. The dying declaration is not easy. So, the dying declaration. Many things are considered. The stories are considered. That is, the story. The story. Such a many things. If so, you see. What is overtaxed? Some overtaxed. Overtaxed. If he is thinking about it now. He has done it. Any kind of unfairness. The things are there. The police will come. In such a way, the dying declaration is only required. It is very good. But if we see such situations. The dying declaration. Many judgments. Uncorroborated testimony. The dying declaration can be taken account. You are very clear. You want to understand. Uncorroboration. It is not corroboration or contradiction. Both are synonymous terms. Uncorroboration. That is another term. Many people use it. Uncorroboration. It is taken. Or taken. What is the issue? It is taken. Or contradiction. That is uncorroboration. But not corroboration. It is taken. Corroboration is taken. For example. That is, if we say that it is taken. Now, I said. If someone is throwing a knife. The maniac is running. The person is running. But he cannot run. After that, it will be revealed. This is the issue. The victim is the only one. It is corroboration. That is, it is not possible to say. In such a way, the situation is uncorroboration. But for example. I am sitting. I am sitting on TV. The dying declaration is running. But there is no TV. If so, it is not possible to say. If the people who are talking. Are talking. If they are talking. If there is a dying declaration. The dying declaration is not away from suspicion. So, if a person is suspicious. Evidence of the dying declaration. 30 stories. Look at the place. If it is not suspicious. It is genuine. If the acid test is passed. It will be revealed. The dying declaration is corroboration. But if we see it. The fire is burning. It is not possible to prove the dying declaration. We cannot prove it. If we say it is corroboration. It is overtaxed. What weapon are they using? The weapon was recovered. Not from the place of occurrence. The occurrence happened. The place of occurrence is the situation. This is the situation. It is taken. The person who is taking the knife. This is very important. If we take a dying declaration. In what condition? We can prove it. There are many examples. It is a fact. We can only say. When you see. The dying declaration. It is absolute false. People will say. I am a public prosecutor. I see many cases. If a maniac. The maniac is running. He is not a child. But if a 60-year-old person. He is not a child. This is my favorite. I am a public prosecutor. I will say that. The maniac is doing. That is, he is crying. It is very painful. We give him a dying declaration. Before that, he will see his brother. What is the maniac saying? You are a boy. He has a lot of money. Why are you crying? You are a boy. So, if you cry. I will say that. You are the one who gives it. After that, he will say. Another dying declaration. But then, he will make a maniac. When the maniac is made. Why are you crying? I will not say that. I will say that I am innocent. He is doing it. But the magistrate is coming. The magistrate is doing. He is saying that he is a maniac. But when the maniac is running. I am a public prosecutor. I will arrest him. When the court opens. A complaint came. If so, his brother. Because his sister. Crying. He cried. He gave a complaint. He is crying. I have said. The investigation officer. He said that. If he gives it. He will sue the judge. He said that the judiciary officer. The inspector said. It is not possible to do that. If a lawyer. If the maniac is doing it. He said that it is the nature of the human being. If you know. If you say that the judiciary. It is not possible to prove it. It is not possible. It is a practical difficulty. Because it is facts. So, if we say a dying declaration. The people who know. The dying declaration. What is the issue? Material fact. One. Medical fact. One. Overtaxed. Now, if you look. The dying declaration. It is very dangerous. It is not possible to prove it. Now, you see. A case sheet is in a hospital. If we take a dying declaration. In the case sheet. What is he doing? What is he doing? It is necessary. Only that. If he is a person. If he gives the money. Only that. The dying declaration. When it is running. The proceedings. The case sheet is needed. If so, it is away from suspicion. It is not possible to prove it. So, if a dying declaration. It is necessary. There are many cases. If it is a fact. We can only say. When you see. What is wrong? When you see. It is not possible to say. A dying declaration. Because the dying declaration. The people who gave it. They can say very much. But if it is not. If the people who are here. Or if the situation is bad. But if the dying declaration. Is not good. But if it is the truth. If we test it. The truth. It is not possible to prove it. For example. A motive. The murderer. The victim is there. They are both. What is the motive? Now, they are voting. But it is not approved. But if there is a motive. If the prosecution says. மோட்டிவே பிரசுகுஷன் தரப்பில் சொல்லப்படலும்னா இது இஸ் நாட் ய க்லீன் டையிங் டிக்லேஷன் இது டாக்குண்ட் அகவுண்ட ஆனா என்ன மோட்டிவ் இருக்குது அப்போயின் பார்க்கணும் என்னாவது சினா நேரங்கள் பாத்தீங்கன்னா அதாவது அது அது தனுடைய மகித்துக்கெட்டு கொஞ்சம் சினா நேரங்களில் இது குடும்ப விஷயங்கள் பாத்தீங்கன்னா கணவு மனைவுக்கு தக்கரா இருக்கும் கணவுங்களுக்கு பிடியாது மனைவுக்கு கணவு மிடிகாது சினா நேரங்கள் பாத்தீங்கன்னா வர்த்தச்சினிக்குடும்ப இருக்கும் அந்த மாறி சூணைகள் எல்லா அந்த வர்த்தச்சினிக்குடும்ப இருந்ததா சரி ஜெஜ்மின்ஸ்ல பாத்தீங்கன்னா வர்த்தச்சினிக்குடும்ப இருந்ததா கொடுத்து இருக்குதா அது ஆனா வர்த்தச்சினிக்குடும்ப கேட்டதாகும் கொடுத்ததாகும் அந்த மாறி இன்ஸ்ட்ஸன்ஸ் எதிரிமை அந்த பிரசுகுஷன் தரப்பில நிருவிக்கும் வியாத ஒரு சூணல் இருக்கும் அமாதரியிருக்கின்ற சூணலையில டையிங் டிக்லேஷன் வந்து வர்த்தச்சினிக்குடும்ப கேட்காதா அந்த மாறி ஆச்சின் சொல்லித்தானா அதை ஏற்றுக்கொள்ள முடியாது அது வந்து சந்தேக சில்புரிய ஒரு விஷயமாக இருக்கும் அதானா டையிங் டிக்லேஷன் என்பது எடுத்துப்படகாம் ஆனா அது எந்தவிதமான ஒரு முறன்பாடுகள் வரசு தரப்பில் இருக்கின்ற விஷயங்களுக்கு முறன்பாடு உணதாக இருக்க கூடாது எந்தவொரு விஷயத்தையும் அந்த மாறி அது இருக்கத்தில் சான்ச இல்ல அப்படின்னு சொல்லுகின்ற விஷயமான அம்சங்கள் அந்த வாகு தரப்பில் இருக்க கூடா அதானா அது டையிங் டிக்லேஷன் பொற்றவரிக்கு நம்ம மிகவும் முக்கியமா பார்க்கவேண்டியது நா பல டையிங் டிக்லேஷன் இருக்கலா டையிங் டிக்லேஷன் முக்கியமா பார்க்கவேண்டியது நா கான்சியஸ்னஸ் அப்படி அப்படி கிவ் ஆன்ஸ்டஸ் இருக்கணும் எடுக்கும்போது மேஜிஸ்டேட் சொல்லுது இருக்கணும் அது வந்து எல்லாது கணசியா அது படிச்சுக்காட்டி அதை நான் சொன்னே இருந்து அதிகம் ரெகார்ட் பிரோசீட்டிங்ஸ்ல ரெகார்டிங் பண்ணி இருக்கணும் இவ்வளவு இருந்து அந்த டையிங் டிக்லேஷன் எந்தவிதமான மிடீரில் டிபெக்டிவ் திப்போ பிரசுகுஷன் இல்லையென்று சொன்னா அந்த டையிங் டிக்லேஷன் எடுத்துக்கலா அப்படி இல்லையென்று சொன்னா அந்த டையிங் டிக்லேஷன் எடுத்துக்கொள்ளப்பட மட்டாயு அதானா டையிங் டிக்லேஷன் பொற்றவரிக்கு இப்போ என்ன எனக்கு வேற என்னுடைய சப்ஜெட்டில் கொடுத்து இருந்த காலத்தினால அப்படின்னால் இதே அது தான் இல்ல ஆனால உங்களுக்கு எதாவது சந்தேக என்ன கூட நீங்க கேட்கலாம் டையிங் டிக்லேஷன் என்பது இப்ப ஹாட் என்னி டவுட் பாப்ட் எனி பட்டிகுலர் ஆஸ்கெட்ஸ் எனிபிடி ஸேலிங் திடவுட்
சரி நீங்களே கண்ணியும் கண்ணியும் கொடுக்கிட்டீங்களா ச
இதான்க
நீங்க நெக்ஸ்ட் டாபிக் பைரிங் சரி கடிசியா ஒரு சேஷன் இது பணிக்கலாம்
ஓக்கிய ஓக்கிய ஓக்கிய
10 மினிட் ஒடிக்கலாம் ச
ஓக்கிய ஓக்கிய அடுத்தது ஜாயின் கன்பெஸ்ட் கன்பெஸ்ட் என்பது ஒப்புதல் வாக்கும்போல ஒரு ஒப்புதல் வாக்கும்போல இதுக்காக கொடுப்பிராங்க ஒப்புதல் வாக்கும்போல சாதாரணமாக டிசேவல் என்று பாத்தீங்கன்னா அந்த ஒப்புதல் வாக்கும்போல வந்து காவல் தொரையின் உடைய கட்டுப்பாட்டு இருக்கும்போது சொன்னா அது எடுபடாது
saari kippadamattar except approval aravu adhanada the second confession is not admissible. Anathala new facts idaavu elicit padraganana andha confession no acceptable sala jajjumman soruganu. Adhanala uru uru confession na yepudu irukunna. Sallanangal paadiina recovery la paadiina confession of discovering materials matter vandhilala. Even to show the place also come under the same category. Edhade, eni pathiripinu ovur confessionniyam anna ittukundusindra. Naan olituvijithirukindra, daayidhuthu olituvijithirunnu edakku ittukundusindra, abba edhuthu unna eda kodukkunna. Idha oru purudai thaan edhuthukuttha tha adha recoverya varuma. Fact discada varunna, andha edakthi kaatukurainnendu sullai elicitanada, adhu varu. Anathal yepudu tha adha edhuthukodalaanana, andha eda adhakku munbu ilavadakile vendruthukooda. Edhavu sakshetranalu yafayadu edhiri me, andha sambhavam nadanda edam solappadama rundhi. Indha confession orabaga thananda eda, the prosecution tarafu, avadu saarnasivu rulvi thireyavaru indhu sonna. Appudu thudhu, andha recovery place ring parunga, anna adakitchanu, uru udanadu kayalavu uravan, paduthu neethu urudhunna, adhu ayyanam igadigadu. Idhu yepudu police aravu vandhar recovery panambidiyam, adhamare shoolalela, uru vaanik, ndha edam thireyadiyaa arukkumindu sonna. Andha andha edakthi kodumbaiyaa kaanveekila, andha edakthi thurudhurathu shoolale ariyamadu, prosecution tarafula, thurudhuridhuridhuri vishingalukku porumiyaa irukkuruindu sonna. Appudu thudhu adhu gudan recoverya edhuthukala, anathal the confession indhu opudal vaakumalindhu. Yepudu thallashenruindu sala vishingalukki, adhumattu lama, namudi sattandharile paadiina. Avadu confession given before the railway police. Um, customs authorities announcement soruganu, alavu vandhu, enakkuda thudummalathu chaliyana. Idhe, avadu compulsion, coercion, threatened, idhala avukatti irukki. Irundhana, police adhikaariyilum, beelukumandhu thaan, tharakumandhu thaan, andha sattandha koduvathara, anathal adhamare idhala vandhada kida. Prada adhalayu namavandhu na, avaru compel pannanga, threaten pannanga, baravandha padhruthanganu, vishingalai, namudi esanthirukindhu, vadakilu, namu nirupadam seetha, adhu silladu. Adhanala oru opudal vaakumalindhu sonna, kutrathipattu suriyirukkumindum. Erandha avadu, adhu yepudu thadmissible abhina, adha adhalindhu, avanu facts idhuva enaidukka, discover pannirukkanga, anudhu thapuruthu tha, andha portion matutha admissible. Adhu illaasala nalantra paadiina, nare neeti mandhagala, anupalkindra, avadu ATP paadiina, fulla elajjumpana, namu evadu sonuana, adhu kekamadhanu, adhu thavaru. Edhu adha fact discoveradu, adhu matutha panambidi, adhumattu namu thandha confession rukke vandhi abhinna. Indha confession nevachidu tha, one sixty four la amma rekard panambidiyam, yena, one sixty four vachidu tha approval panambidiyam. One sixty four vachis so many things done in our criminal jurisdiction, adhanala the confession indhu, neevu mukhyam.